I'm going to call the library board meeting to order. Emergency exits are to my right and my, my left and my right in front. And we have quorum and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States, America, to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approving the order of the agenda. Looks okay?
Yes.
Public comments? Amy, is anybody on that would like to speak? Okay, thank you. And board members can also be contacted at chaboard@wlsmail.org.
And Pam, we're going to note that we held an executive session, right?
Yes, we held an executive session tonight at 6:18. And we came out of it at 6:54. Absolutely. Thank you.
And no actions were taken?
No actions were taken. Thank you. No actions were taken in the executive session. Okay, moving on to board administration, acceptance of the minutes of the February 26, 24 regular meeting.
Okay, I moved that the board approved the minutes of the February 26, 2024 regular meeting as drafted. Do I have a second?
I'll say a second.
Brian Cook. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving down to finance, we have a treasurer's report prepared by Naraki Smith, Darren Ika-Belly, Treasurer, and presented by George Benak, Finance Officer.
Okay, I didn't receive this. With board until now.
Okay.
And so I did read over just the cover letter, but. Brian, did you?
I looked at it. The, it's the standard treasurer's report. Everything must be in, in good order. Couple, couple checks that are outstanding.
Can you ask Naraki to, to send this to me?
Yeah, I just looked at it this morning when it was.
Okay.
This was part of the board packet that was?
The board packet we sent on Friday.
Yep.
Oh, I didn't know this was in there.
Yes.
Okay.
But if you'd prefer it sent separately?
No, that's fine. It's just.
Okay.
Well, historically, historically, they sent it to the finance officer as well as the library director in advance. So they should.
Is this, there are 15 checks that are over six months outstanding? Is, okay, sure. Take your time.
Yeah.
I believe this was on the last, last month's report also that these checks were outstanding.
Flatlining there. Yeah. So we can make an effort to.
Yeah, I know we've been playing catch up with.
I think once the budget is kind of finished, then we can go after that.
Right.
So these are checks that people have in cash?
No.
Okay.
And there were some issues where they were reissued and then they cashed both. And so it's. Okay. Administrative follow-up.
Okay, do, do you think, are we comfortable?
I would move that.
That we can take, we can take action on this?
Um, just a couple, yes, points I wanted to ask George or Brian. So this statement here about from Naraki Smith, we have not examined the supporting documentations. Is that?
Hey, that's, I guess, for the latest.
Who did that historically? Was that our prior staff assistant or did Naraki do that?
They probably would look at the, I guess they just maybe didn't get it.
Didn't have time or didn't receive it. Okay, that's what.
They probably for the, the next report, the February report that's got through, the February checks.
Okay.
Because this report only goes runs through January.
Okay.
So I think they're just a month behind on this.
And then question for you, Jen.
Sure.
We've got the expense for the new system in here. Is the, are the grant funds in here?
They are not.
Okay.
They are not. We have not received those yet.
Okay.
So.
Any sense of timing on that?
I would think it would be any day now, but I can certainly follow up with the DLD.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure in the transition, we weren't losing.
Firm side of that.
Cause it's a big, it was a big expense we agreed to.
Yep.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay. George, you just want to read the motion?
Yes. Move that we accept the prepared financial statements from Naraki Smith dated March, for January 2024. Dated March 18th, no, March. Doesn't have a date for when it was.
February?
Oh, right. Cause it says our meeting date.
Right. Well, let's just say the treasure report for January 2024, I would move that we accept this. Approved.
Okay, Brian seconds. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Just one thing I wanted to bring up, not as a condition to that approval, but as a question perhaps for you, Jen. One of the things and. Shame on me because I should have went it out to you. Maybe someone has. We had a really great financial training from Naraki Smith that Brian arranged. And it's all on video.
Oh.
So that would be a great, you know, where they were, you know, really walking through all the library financials.
Okay.
So.
Where does that live?
Oh, good point. Was it recorded?
Yes.
I don't know whether it was on video, Jen, because I wasn't at that meeting. I'd love to see it because I was absent then. It was a special meeting we had.
I thought it. No, I know it was because I went through the video to take a minute.
Do you know where it lives?
Not now.
Amy might know where.
Did they host this?
But it's worth, it's worth seeing if we could locate that. Um, but one of the things they brought up is that, just for consideration going forward, is that we should not just have a category, and it's noted here, of Amazon, for example, that it should be allocated to, you know, it might be 40% books, it might be 20% periodical, you know what I mean?
Right. Can you show me where your?
Yeah. So it says Amazon bills are being reported to miscellaneous. So that was a critique of us that they had.
Okay.
So just to bring that to your attention. That's all he has.
We have Kristen in the house from Friends. Welcome. Hi, would you like to have the floor?
Casual.
Casual.
Forty-fourth Annual Writers Contest is underway. Submissions for students who graduate five to 12 that live in or go to CPST. Schools are invited to participate. Categories are fiction, nonfiction, and poetry. Submissions are due next Friday, March 29th at 11:59 PM. And we have a great panel of judges this year. We've judged everything. Everything's anonymous. And we're looking forward to supporting and sharing for different programs we discuss throughout this year. This spring and we'll have a reception to honor everybody who submitted their work and celebrate all of these and honor it.
Wonderful. And is the reception here?
It is here. We try to put it in the courtyard with weather permit, but otherwise it's right, right here.
And how do you select your judges?
We, we find members of the community who have, who have a background in, or either professional writers or editors or journalists. So they have experience in, in the field. But if you know anyone who would be interested in being a judge in the Writers Contest, please feel free to forward their name along. It is a lot of. A lot of essays that are written for, you know, a small town judges. So if we have more judges we have, then we can give them. We can have a judge judge middle school, judge high school, and the work is divided more evenly among, so that it's a smaller kind of thing too. So we're happy to have more and more judges. But I have to say, most of the judges love doing it and come back annually. So it's a lot of fun.
That's fantastic.
And then our book sale dates are set for May.
Yep.
And so we are really looking forward to that annual event. I don't want to say the exact dates, we put it in the calendar. The book sale week is really May, Monday, May 13th. Those are May 13th and 14th, the donation days for people to drop off their used books. And then a member preview sale is Wednesday evening from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. I've always been hit come early into that selection. And then it's open to the full public Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and on Sunday, everything is free. So those are the big, big spring items for the friends.
Excellent. Thank you. So glad, so glad you're here. Okay, moving on to our committee reports, we're going to start with George in finance again.
And, oh, did you want to do Jen's?
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. We're skipping over me and you, Jen. I'm sorry. Okay, so. Sorry about that. So for the president's report, we have been working on the budget, happy to report that we will not be exceeding the tax cap. And we think some of the changes that are being proposed in this year's budget will make us a stronger organization. As trustees, we take our fiduciary responsibility very seriously as that is our primary role. Thank you. Would you like to go then?
Sure. I don't have much to add, other than we've been working tirelessly on the budget for next year. And I just want to acknowledge some people that have been very helpful to me personally through this whole process. There's Amy, there's Marge Perlin, there's Carolyn Resnick, our former interim director, as well as Josh Colwell Block and Kathleen Lynch at the School District Business Office. I'm very grateful to each of these people for all the help and assistance they've given me. I would like to echo Pam's sentiments that I think it's a really strong budget. And I think it is going to help us prepare, be strong, to be stronger in the future. So, yeah.
Thank you so much. Okay, circling back to committee reports.
Okay, Brian and I met, met a few times with Jennifer regarding the budget. I had a meeting with Josh Colwell Block as well. About the budget and the, he really reached out to me because we have a past history relationship. And he did have very positive things to say about Jennifer daddy. It was a pleasure to work with her. And I think that Jennifer said she felt the same, but gosh, very productive. I don't have anything to add other than what we said before about the, the report from Naraki Smith. But I will say that I, I need to sit down with Brian and have a more firm handing over the baton. And I could do the same with Brian in terms of my communication part.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you so much. And thank you also, Brian, for all your help on this committee. Moving on to building and grounds, Jennifer.
Sure. We've got a couple motions to present. We had a meeting with Bill Link, our facilities consultant. And I feel like Jen, you and Pam have lit a great fire under him. Because we're, we're pushing forward with a few things. I'll move to the motions, but one of the topics we discussed was if we were not proceeding with the big architect plan at this moment in time, could we consider some things like replacing the very dingy carpet in the main section of the library? So we have, we presented in public forum, the estimate that we received, I believe approximately a year ago. We aren't ready to make a motion to that effect. It was a six-figure number. It was a substantial number, around $100,000. It would involve recarpeting all the current carpeted areas outside of the children's area, which is, you know, recently refurbished. But my understanding is we're going to obtain proposals and we'll bring that to the board. And I think we're also going to try and integrate the two so that the design and the color of the children's area would mesh with the broader library. And I was pleased to hear that because we've, you know, since I joined the board, we've had complaints from, from staff about, and patrons, about tripping hazards with the current setup, the stains, et cetera. So that could be very exciting.
So hopefully we'll have some proposals to bring to the board in the next month or so.
For the next meeting. That would be ideal. We also spoke about, we are investigating, but I don't yet have paperwork relative to an alternative proposal for the penthouse electric panel. Our consultant did feel like he had a competent second alternative, but as I said, I don't think it's at least papered. Nothing that I've seen yet. So holding out hope for that. So we have a competitive situation. We also talked about obtaining competitive proposals and/or piggybacking on CCSD or Boche's vendors with respect to pest management and cleaning of the library. So. Hopefully news to follow in the subsequent meeting.
Is there anything else you wanted to touch on, building grounds, before we move to the motions?
No, I think that we can go right into them.
Anything?
Nope, no, but thank you. I think those were the big issues. Okay, I'll make a motion then. Included in the board packet is the proposal from McKinsey Automatic Doors for something we've been talking about for over six months. Which originated from both staff and patron requests that we install an automatic door feature with respect to one of the gallery, one of the four gallery walk restrooms so that people facing a disability or handicap or other situation, you know, we have people on walkers, et cetera, have greater ease of access. And so we don't have to take staff away from other public facing duties to go assist them in this regard. So the proposal, and it's not a complete proposal because there would be electric with this, but we've been assured that that would be a, a minor portion of, of the overall total. Remember, only one second. Went to the first page and off the. The proposal is for the amount of. Are you recording the back?
Okay.
Forgive me. Okay, so the proposed price is $6,873 plus I am recommending that we include the sensor proposal, which is so useful when we're dealing with COVID or other situations for an additional $645. And the motion is to authorize the library director to move forward with that proposal, plus the hiring of an electrical contractor. Probably our usual to assist with that installation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any, any discussion, but we asked for a vote? Okay, a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
While we're on the buildings and grounds, Pam, can I just make one more request that we look into cleaning the windows?
Yes.
Oh, we brought that up last.
Yes, we did. And we did bring it up.
Okay.
So he was, so Bill was going to, was working on it. We brought it up at our meeting.
Good, good, good.
Yes, thank you.
I just saw it again today and went, oh.
Yep. No, we'll follow up on that.
Okay.
There was some discussion around whether that is our janitor's responsibility or the cleaning company, or should be a third party.
Got it. Okay.
Being investigated. Sorry, I didn't know that. Okay, I'll make a motion as well. I'm very excited about this one. Also something we've been talking about for months at this point in time. We have the proposal included in the board packet from Robert M. Spano, plumber, for the amount of $3,800 for the installation of, we've all seen them in airports, the LK water bottle, bottle filler, which will be by our drinking fountain, for the amount of $3,800. And this was a piggyback proposal, which is why we didn't require alternatives. Do we have a second?
Question before.
Yes, yeah, second and then discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Brian seconding?
Thank you. Discussion?
Uh, yes, I know that these filters can be very expensive. We incorporated the cost of these filters for the the dispenser.
This, yes, this proposal includes the removal of the current one and the installation of the LK.
Right, but that filter's gonna have.
Oh, you mean the recurring, the.
No, this is, this is.
Blades to the razor.
Okay.
Right. No, this, this is just the installation. Yes.
We'll come back to the board with that cost. I think it's going to be manageable. It's not, you're, you're correct. It's not, nothing. It is blades and razor and all of them.
Any other discussion, question? Okay. If you take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, great. Moving into personnel, John, anything?
Yeah, so there's been a lot of proposals regarding making changes, now that Jen's on board, to the administrative structure. And one of them includes bringing Amy Cap, Capperlin? Maybe I mispronounced her name.
Caprellian.
Caprellian, excuse me. On board as a staff assistant. And so I wanted to make a motion that the board approve some funds that will allow us to fill this staff position. We have struggled mightily over the last several months, even almost a year now, to have a sort of stability in that position. And we need to approve some funds for a screening process that will allow us to bring Amy in a more permanent role. And so I'd like the board to here today to prove funds not to exceed 10% of the annual salary for costs related to bringing Amy aboard.
A second?
I'll second.
Discussion? So Amy's been working out as a, as our, as our staff assistant.
She's been wonderful.
Fantastic.
I, I think working out is an understatement.
I agree with that.
Including the fact that everything is running so seamlessly in terms of, from a board position. And there's not a piece of information I have to struggle for. So I don't have to sort of go through files on computers and stuff. It's just been so seamless. And so I think that, you know, the sign of a well-run institution is when you have good support people in place. And then you give them compensation that acknowledges their work. So I think this is a, a really good expenditure of board money.
Fantastic. The board's ready to vote? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
Okay, fantastic.
In terms of other things, I don't know whether we're ready to, prepared to move yet on specific issues. Are we, Pam, gonna?
Um, I think that's, I think we're gonna table.
I think we're gonna table it.
Table it, okay.
We'll table it and.
But stay tuned for, for more developments in terms of administrative moves that we will make to bring about greater coherence in terms of how the library works.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm gonna keep you in the seat under policy and bylaws. Any, any updates?
No, no updates, only that, and this is my fault for not bringing this forward earlier, and certainly not for any vote, which was the American Library Association had a series of, what's the language I want to use here?
Core values.
Core values, thank you. Which I think we might want to look at. I think we, we gotta have them in front of us and have a, a larger conversation for that. But I think that, and it raises philosophical questions about the extent to which we as a library want to sign on to language used by the American Library Association. But some of the stuff was thoughtfully written, I thought, and worth a longer conversation.
Okay, so let's, we'll try, why don't we try and wrap that up by, by next board meeting?
Next meeting, okay.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. Moving into ad hoc committees, Brian, on communication.
Communications committee doesn't have anything to report on, but I'll echo George's comment that we should get together and and put our heads together as to what we should need to be on top of.
Fantastic. Okay, so the last thing we have to do is we have to vote on our budget. Okay, so on a proposed, on a proposed budget. So should I make the motion?
Should I?
Okay. No, I didn't know like.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, so I'm going to. I moved that the board approve the proposed budget for 2024, 2025 as drafted.
Do you need to say?
Second.
Okay, okay. All right, great.
Discussion?
John, John second. Yep, okay, discussion?
I, I want to underscore the fact that this budget is not above the tax cap. I think that that's an incredibly important thing for the community to note. At a time when a lot of Westchester institutions, school districts in particular, are having to bring or are bringing forward budgets that go above the tax cap. I think this tax, this budget which goes below the tax cap, I think is an expression of real fiscal responsibility. And I think that needs to be sort of highlighted.
Thank you. I also want to echo Jennifer, your words earlier on, at a time when there was a lot going on at the library, and you're just walking in the door, that, that everybody really pulled together to support you in, in getting this budget off the ground and without missing a beat.
I would just further echo John's comment. Not only are we not going above the tax cap, but the bottom line number is actually slightly less than prior year, which is pretty remarkable.
Fantastic. That's great.
Can we talk about, or can you outline what major investments are included here? You know, like we've talked about so many things. You know, I, I would personally love to see, you know, we have that whole architect's proposal. We could parse out sections of it and dedicate some funds to improving the children's area courtyard, for example.
Right, right. I think.
I don't know what's anticipated here.
This is a really, I don't want to say a bare bones budget, but it's, it's not excessive in any way. I think everything that's in here.
Jen, I don't think anything was presented to us in the. Jen, I don't think anything was presented to us in the way of major capital.
Yeah.
I don't think any of that would be included. And I think if there was, we would have to vote on it as a board, so.
Yes.
As far as I know, this is mostly operating, no major capital improvements, other than the things that were already.
Right, and I think that those types of, I think that's a conversation for another day to talk about the game plan that we want to tackle in the coming year, whether it's be the children's room or the carpeting or other, you know, the electrical panels, which I know there's a bit of a list. Um, but we can tackle that, I think, but I, I can't really, I, to Brian's point, I can't really speak to that specifically right now.
So nervous to have a budget that doesn't have
Well, we haven't.
Some cushion in that regard. You know, there's, there's the um, things the architects propose, um, proposed that are not wants, like, like I was saying, the children's courtyard. Um, but needs, like some of the roofing, um, it's falling apart.
Yeah.
Things like that.
Well, those we could cover with the fund balance, that would probably be appropriate use of those types of funds for capital um, expenditure. But yeah, we should probably have a discussion as to what.
But our treasurer, as you well know, because you initiated all this discussion, um, basically told us that our fund balance is appropriate to our budget, right? In other words, they sort of implied that we don't have a lot of access to that, right?
I thought he implied we were a little higher than.
Did you say the last thing? You just said Jennifer again?
We, so we talked to Naraqui Smith.
Right.
You know, one of the principles there is our treasure, our fiscal treasure. And we asked him because I think we hoped there was a good deal of cushion in our fund balance, which seems to be.
Comment was that we were on the higher side, and that's.
I wouldn't say it was twenty-six to thirty, twenty-eight to thirty-six percent. This is just memory, so it's flawed. Um, and we were within that um, recommendation.
Okay.
Without.
Well, I think what we should do is make a list of these sort of wants and needs from a capital expenditure standpoint, and then we can prioritize them. Vote on them, let them go ahead.
I think that's a great idea. Into, to just to narrow down.
Right.
I don't even know, I wouldn't know what we're back into there. So that would be.
And maybe what other grants might be available.
Right, right. Um.
The fund balance question is always an interesting one, right?
It is.
Because you don't want to carry too much fund balance, because that that's, that's a sign that you carry, that you're asking taxpayers to pay for things that you're not using money for.
Right.
Uh, but you also, you know, floods happen, roofs leak, right?
Hard to ask for taxpayers for money in the middle of the year too.
Right, exactly. So I, I, I'm, I think it's a, it's a, it's a balancing act with, with um, fund balances. And, 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 and just one last point, that some school districts have gotten themselves in to sticky situations because they've carried too much on fund balances and um, have received some pretty serious criticism for carrying too much on fund balance.
Right.
Right, there have even been members of the public who've requested refunds.
Based on the excess fund, right, yeah. So I just think we need to be cognizant of the, the balancing of the fund balance. And as much as Naraqui Smith is probably saying good stuff, there's also a public perception around fund balances.
Which we were, because Jennifer, when, when you, Brian, and myself came on, there was a large fund balance because of COVID and we put a lot of money into various projects, right, in, in, in this, in this library.
And I would say the, the guidance from Naraqui Smith is a good thing to point to for the public saying, well, they, they recommend that we carry about a third of our budget for the year, to a third of our budget for the year. In case of an emergency of some kind, and that's, we're, we're right about there.
Jennifer, in your previous experience, has that been roughly what libraries are carrying in terms of fund balance?
Roughly, yes. I mean, it depends, it, it depends on the library, it depends on the community. But you're right, that communities by and large don't want to see a huge fund balance, because then they ask, well, why are you asking me for more money? So it's a, a fine line to walk. But to Jennifer's point, if you have a number of capital projects that you want to accomplish, you don't want to completely wipe out your fund balance, so.
So just checked on the current budget, our um, I withdraw my earlier concern because our fund balance is at seventy-six point nine percent of the current, of the proposed budget. So I don't know, you know, again, I was operating out of
Revenue, it's, it's a significant amount.
Yeah, yeah, so. Because the other, the other question I wanted to raise was, we, we had a lot of discussion last year around the budget. Because historically, for I think the prior at least five years, um, the board had allocated ninety-five thousand cushion toward the fund balanced, and we questioned that last year, right, before we Right, um, and we did not do that last year, and so that was going to be one of my questions, were we going to do that this year, which we have not built in.
No, because we want to, we want to do projects.
But we also probably do not need to, no.
At the current level, no, I, I think you're right.
Okay. Okay, so is the board ready to take a vote? On accepting, okay, so all in favor of accepting the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
And Jennifer, you'll make the presentation at the public meeting.
I will, as part of the C C S D.
Okay, so that I'm going to put that Jennifer Fahey under next steps and responsibilities?
Is that board meeting Jennifer this Wednesday?
No, that meeting is in May.
Oh.
Somewhere around the eighth, I believe.
I, 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 I know that there's a meeting this, of the school board this Wednesday, but that's not, okay.
I met with Josh Block last week, and I shared what, what he told me with Jennifer, which she already knew, but uh, the bottom line, tax cap worksheet, I believe Jen first going to send that over to Josh on Monday.
Already did.
Already did, done. April fifteenth, they need the line-by-line budget, because they have a book that they print with the board, with the Board of Education's budget and the itemized line-by-line budget in the library. Doesn't get mailed out to the community, but they print them for the board, and I guess if people want them, uh.
Do we hold them here? Like, are they at the front desk if people want them?
I don't know.
No.
I got my copy from Josh Block in the uh.
The annual report was, also goes out in May.
Okay, right, and so if somebody wants in advance of the vote, where, where could they go to get it?
And those are here.
Mail to everyone, right?
Yes, and there are physical copies here, at least.
But not the line-by-line budget.
Not the line-by-line, I think that's available online.
The two-page, the line-by-lines online.
Online, yes.
And, and that's, Josh said he needed that by April fifteenth. And as you said correctly, uh, Jennifer's going to make the presentation as part of a Board of Education meeting on May eighth.
So then I think there might need to be a meeting before our next board meeting to vote to approve the final line-by-line.
Okay.
With some of the personnel changes.
Because some of the personnel changes that were suggested might change a little bit.
Okay, so by, and then by the next.
Because our board meeting was every fifteen.
Okay, so. It's all, wait, so we, are you?
Make a special meeting.
Is there a suggestion that we'll need a special meeting? Okay, no problem. Right, we will do.
I think it's important for the community to note, though, as Brian, you mentioned earlier, that the community simply votes on the levy.
Yes.
Not on how much we spend on children's books and how much we're spending on
Right.
You know, murder mysteries.
Right.
Thank you for your clarification. Um, is there, is there any other last thoughts before we adjourn? Any last thoughts? Okay, so um, I moved that the board adjourned this meeting at seven forty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.